As a right, and we're going to talk about what that is. At least one zoning district of reasonable size, which we'll get to what that means in Sherburne, with a minimum gross density of fifteen units an acre, which is like, what does that mean? We'll talk a little bit about that. And where that's applicable, not more than half a mile from, you know, it could be a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry and so forth. And that's not relevant for Sherburne. So that location requirement doesn't apply for you. Having no age restrictions in the zoning bylaw, so it can't be restricted, say, for only fifty-five and older, sixty-five and older housing. And you can't in the bylaw say it's only one or two bedrooms, or that bedrooms have to be a certain size. Now, a developer could build whatever they want, you just can't restrict the, restrict it with the bylaw. So zoning is what we're talking about here, and zoning is really a regulatory tool that directs how growth happens in the town. It's not a requirement that what's on the ground now change. It's not a requirement that anything actually be built. And it's not an obligation for the town to provide water service or sewer infrastructure for development. It's just sort of changing the rules under which something could be built. Multi-family housing has a lot of different ways that it can look. I think oftentimes we, we think about multi-family housing as these huge apartment complexes, but there's a lot of smaller scale type of developments and townhouses and things that also count as multi-family. So I don't want to, there's, you might have heard of this term called the missing middle. So that there's a lot of options that can be done in a more gentle density way. That's between a single-family home and a large apartment complex. There's a lot of other options in the middle. And just to clarify something, so the law does require, and it is a law, it is a requirement, there are consequences if, if we, if you don't comply, that to create at least one zoning district, but you get to choose what, where that is. For multi-family near transit, obviously that doesn't apply in Sherburne. But again, it doesn't require that you pay for water and sewer infrastructure. It doesn't overrule any other requirements that you have, importantly, like septic requirements, Title V, wetlands laws, the existing zoning that's already on the ground, because this is going to be proposed as an overlay district, so you'll be able to do either. It doesn't force any property owners to actually develop their goal. It doesn't create a housing production goal. It's, and it doesn't replace any other housing laws or programs. So if those of you may have heard of Chapter forty B or forty R districts, or some of these other kind of housing programs and housing rules, this is really a totally separate thing. So what does as of right mean in zoning? That really means that you don't have to go to the zoning board of appeals. You, no special permit or other discretionary approval is needed. The planning board handles it through site plan review. They technically can't say no, but it's not a free-for-all either. So you do have to follow a certain set of requirements. So you could say no if it doesn't meet those requirements. But if you meet the requirements that are, the bylaw spells out, you have it reviewed through the planning board, and then it's, the site plan is approved. You also can't have any extra requirements per the law. You can't have any extra requirements just on the multi-family housing component, but doesn't apply to other, other uses in town. Because, for example, extra energy efficiency requirements, or mandating it that it have design standards. You, you can have those things, but it has to be a broader application than just the multi-family use. There's a little caveat here about what as of right means according to the EO HLC, and deed restricted affordability. So this does matter for the so-called Chapter forty B law, where you may, you are required to have ten percent of your year-round housing stock deed restricted as affordable. And Sherburne is not at that level yet, but it's something you want to be mindful of. And, but they don't allow you to have more than ten percent of your units at, say, ten units or more, be deed restricted affordable, because it's not considered to be financially feasible to do that without further study. You also can't do a deeper level of affordability. So you, they cap it at what they call eighty percent of area median income. For your income, going lower to lower, deeper thresholds of affordability often requires more financial subsidy, and can be more difficult and challenging and a barrier to creating multi-family housing development. So if, if the town, or if any town or city wants to have higher levels of affordable housing, or deeper levels in the affordable housing, it just takes extra study and extra approval by the state. So there's a couple of exceptions for where it may be up to twenty percent. But in, in Sherburne's case, you have a pre-existing inclusionary zoning bylaw that there's some discussion needed on, on that feasibility and possibly further study needed in order, in order to keep that requirement, or to have a different requirement, a lesser requirement, ten percent for the overlay district. So that's one of the areas that we flag for the town as, as something they need to be mindful of, as not complying as it is without further study. In terms of reasonable size, for a lot of communities, it's fifty acres. For Sherburne, it's, it's, there's no minimum land area. You do still have to meet two other requirements. One is a capacity number, and the other is the sort of fifteen units per acre number. So we'll get into that. The capacity number is determined by the sliding scale according to what category of community you are. And it's based on the percentage of the total number of housing units you had in 2020. So in 2020 census, Sherburne had one thousand five hundred and sixty-two housing units, five percent of that is seventy-eight. And so you have a minimum multi-family unit capacity of seventy-eight. So you need to find enough space to fit seventy-eight units under a potential theoretical model, whether or not those units are actually able to be built, is a different question. This is just a sample of, you know, how that slides in, in comparison. So as a small adjacent community, Sherburne has on the far lower side, as compared to some of the more, you know, urban communities or ones with other, more rapid forms of transit. And then, I've already touched on this, I'll breeze through this. So suitability with, for families with children is, you know, no age restrictions on the units, no legal restrictions on the size of units, number of bedrooms, size of the bedroom, or the number of occupants on the, on the zoning side. Now, it doesn't mean that it's now illegal for a developer to do that. If a developer, if you say you pass a compliant bylaw, and a developer came in and said, you know, I really see a market for a one-bedroom development for those fifty-five and older, that's fine. It's just that the bylaw can't mandate it. A little bit about the potential capacity here is the unit capacity is a number that you could allow as a right in a district, and may, there are some units, and things may already be there on the land. You know, you may have a single-family home on a lot already. But the, the sort of model that we use treats everywhere as if it were an undeveloped parcel, and sort of evaluates based on what the potential zoning requirements might be. You can play around with different requirements and different setbacks and heights and parking requirements and things. And the model kind of spits out what, how many like little boxes could potentially go there. But it, it doesn't take into account, you know, space needed for, say, a septic system, which is a different law that would still apply and overrule this capacity. So this capacity is really an ideal number, if you will, like it's, especially I think in a, in a septic community. So it's just important to keep that in mind. And in terms of what fifteen units an acre can look like, it can vary a lot based on the lot size. So this is a couple of examples. The one on the left is actually in, in the town I live in, in Sharon, which also has no sewer. So it is potential to do, like, that's a two-family home. Technically, it's fifteen units an acre, even though it's not fifteen units, just because the lot size itself is relatively small. And that made my point right there. So you can see those lot sizes are quite small per acre, yet they managed to, well, I don't know about the native one, but for Sharon one, it's still manages to accommodate a septic system. A couple other examples here, these are actually quite a high number of units per acre, but not a high number of units overall. Nine units on the left there in Holliston, sixty-eight units in Ashland. I'm assuming that's a sewered community there. So there's a whole lot of things that impact how dense something can be. So it, the MBTA compliance is only worrying about zoning. It, it's kind of on the law side. It doesn't mean that just because it's zoned, it can be built. So there's environmental factors like wetlands, there's infrastructure impacts like septic systems, there's the overall interest rates right now and construction costs right now. So I think that's just important to keep in mind as we move forward here. This is a slide that I, I pulled from a really helpful webinar series, actually, I'll link at the end. But it's on how septic versus sewer can impact density overall. And I think that that is still going to be the primary limiting factor to Sherburne's mixed-use and multi-family housing development moving forward. It's going to continue to be its lack of sewer infrastructure, and of course, the lack of vacant land, at least around the town center area. And this is, you know, it's, it's not, it gives you a ballpark idea. It's not, it's courtesy of Hancock Associates who have been, or who are developers. And this is just their own experience, working in the Commonwealth of generally what they see as feasible levels of density with septic versus sewer. And you could see that, that the density of septic really kind of caps out at twenty units an acre at the very highest. Just because after that point, you need to create such a large wastewater, shared wastewater treatment system, it becomes very expensive. So you really actually need like a huge number of units to make it worth it. And it just doesn't show up unless you have a really large area that you're working with. So what happens if you fail to comply for one reason or another? There's a number of, of grant programs that the state includes. These are three that they list, but I think they've got probably seven or eight, or even more now, that is on this long list. And Sherburne's, I'm sure it's probably taken advantage of some of these in the past, or may want to in the future. It also generally informs funding decisions by other state agencies when they're evaluating discretionary grant programs. And also that the attorney general's made it clear that it opens up a community of potential legal action by the state, in which, you know, no one, no one wants to see potentially. So, but you have some time to comply. As a small adjacent community, you actually have until December thirty-first of 2025. So that, I think, is a good amount of time, especially since the community has, has gotten a head start now, and is starting to have some, its public conversations and, and has some ideas that they can try. It's also important, I think, to try to find, you know, silver linings of, of things that not everybody is going to agree with. Some people may, you know, agree with this law as well. Often, different housing choices can lead to more equity in the community in terms of socioeconomic status, different incomes are now better able to live in the community. Options for downsizing households or younger generations to remain in the community, just because the smaller size is a little bit more naturally affordable. And this is also a chance to talk about how Sherburne could grow in the future. And that kind of segues us into, because when we started working with the town, I always like to start with what the town has already said. You've already done a lot of planning efforts, recent planning efforts about development and housing. So we'd like to review those and try to support those goals and strategies where we can. One of which is your 2019 master plan. Mentions the town center as an opportunity for some well-designed, higher-density housing. They do also mention, you know, the forty B requirement as a concern for trying to keep up with your deed-restricted affordable housing numbers. The more recent plan here is the housing production plan, which has identified some housing needs in the community for more diverse housing stocks and more different housing choices besides single-family homes, including multi-family homes and barrier-free housing, so, you know, for mobility-impaired individuals. Also, a need for more rental apartments, including affordable, so deed-restricted affordable rental apartments, and affordable homeownership options, including these sort of smaller, more naturally affordable units, I'm sure, as well as deed-restricted units. So very small, single-family homes, condos, which would apply in the case of MBTA communities, and townhouses, which I think could apply as, you know, if you had a number of them together. What you have in your current bylaw is, you know, in the business district, there's really no residential uses that are allowed by right. And for multi-family dwellings, it's allowed in your residence EA district, but it's prohibited in all the other districts. So we already know there's some changes that have to happen to comply with the law. There are generally large minimum lot size and setbacks and low heights. You know, you are a small suburban community, and, and that kind of matches that, along with the fact that you don't have sewer infrastructure. And your existing inclusionary zoning is higher than what MBTA would allow, at least without further study. The parking requirements, however, seem like they're pretty much on par with, with what would be appropriate, given your location away from transit. So where the town has considered so far are, there's two main areas. One is right around the town center area, shown in kind of the main portion of the map. That's Washington Street that's running up and down the main spot there. And then the other spot is off of Kendall Ave and the far, what is that, northeast, northwest corner? Right adjacent to Framingham is the other spot that the town is considering. And you can see there's these two different colors. One is blue, which is what we would consider the actual compliance districts, the ones that are going to allow for multi-family by right without requiring mixed use or anything else. And the green are, are allowing for mixed use, which requires a commercial component in addition to the residential use. And so we're looking for, needing to find enough space for seventy-eight units in those, basically the blue parcels. And exploring that in terms of an overlay district, which means that it's adding this extra option for multi-family housing, but it's not requiring it. So that existing residential zone and those existing business zones are still going to be there, and can still be built according to that underlying zoning. But this is just allowing for this other option kind of added on top, if, if people want. It's also important to talk a little bit about these two other definitions in the bylaw. One is sensitive land and one is excluded land. And when you're modeling for how many units you can actually do, the state removes certain kind of land types from those calculations. So excluded land is removed from that. And that's where land is considered to be actually undevelopable. So it's your, your zones, it's called Zone One wellhead areas, so that you, or it's a deed-restricted conservation parcel, or it's wetlands in and of itself. And so there's a number of those areas that are going to drop out from modeling how many units you can do in those areas of brown, kind of on the left. So there's a few well areas near the town center, then there's some, I think, wetlands and things in there as well. But others are, are included and considered to be developable, and there's some overlap between the two. Sometimes you can have, often when it's wells and wetlands, there is overlap, because the sensitive land is the buffer zones that are, are regulated, but you can develop, but it's, has some extra rules on it. So, so-called Zone Two area around your wells, or extra buffer space against wetlands, are, are what we're seeing in Sherburne anyway. And again, it seems to impact more of the town center areas. The Kendall Ave parcel has some wetland areas, but that's about it. So that's just a recap here again of what excluded land is. Map is a little bit bigger here. So it's any kind of land that's publicly owned, anything that's actual water, wetlands, some buffer zones with wetlands protected, open space, your actual roadways, the Zone One wellhead areas. In Sherburne, your flood zone counts, because your bylaw doesn't allow for development in your flood zone for residences. And then certain, it doesn't apply in Sherburne, but there's certain privately-owned land. If it's like a prison or something like that, it would, it would be excluded. And for sensitive land, it's, again, your wetland buffer zones, land subject to flooding in most other communities, and Sherburne, it's actually excluded. If it's a priority habitat area, that's a flagged area, buffer zones for wells. And then anything with a really prime agricultural soil, if it's an active farm, it's considered to be sensitive. So you have some in the mandatory mixed-use zones especially, but there's some areas of the compliance zone that are toward the north in the Kendall Ave area that look like they are not sensitive. In terms of what you have for actual current, current density, this is an interesting tool. You can actually look it up yourself, it's called Residency. It's put out by the Mass Housing Partnership, and it lets you look up any community in Massachusetts. And here I looked up the town center area, and I drew a little half-mile radius around it, just to take a little snapshot of what kind of density is happening right now on the ground. And as you can see, it's really low density. It's less, it's only about a third of a unit per acre in your town center now, and there's about a hundred and forty-seven units there. And in the area, the half-mile radius gives you an area of about five hundred acres. And then we, when we look out toward the parcel that's adjacent there to Framingham, that's where the, the density jumps a little higher when I do the half-mile snapshot, because it's starting to pull in areas of the adjacent community, communities, I should say, that are a higher density up there. Because I think there's some commercial areas up there, and some more dense housing up in that corner already, as well as possibly even some sewer that's somewhat nearby as well. And that's the direction that the adjacent train station is as well. So there it is, that's kind of a global screenshot. You can see the Framingham commuter rail stations over there. So this is the part where I kind of want to talk about some potential impacts. We want to make sure that we are, are hearing cons and pros and, and concerns and what's on your mind. So for those of you in the room, literal physical room, you can turn to your neighbor, talk about some of the things on your mind, about concerns, whether it's this requirement, or it might even be things about the town, where the town's thinking of locating it. In the virtual room, you know, if you're with someone else in the room, you can talk about it with them, or you can just kind of put, put it in the chat. And then in a, in a moment, I'll, we'll kind of read out some of what we're seeing.
While we are having these discussions, I will say the planning board meeting and hearing was called a session prior to the recording started. So when we do, this will be posted to YouTube. However, we might have to add a slide at the beginning to acknowledge that the recording was started after the meeting had begun. But that the meeting was following procedure as far as opening up the hearing.
I just want to, it seems like I'm not seeing anything in the chat. I just want to confirm that people are able to...
Can you address, I believe John Garrison had a question, and I'm not a hundred percent sure. It probably will ring a bell probably to you more, Laura, the, he posted the question of with five percent requirement, how do you get from fifteen hundred plus housing units to five thousand six hundred? And I'm not sure if...
I'm not sure quite either. So it's really the five percent, so I'll go back in time here for a moment, sorry, as these things kind of flash by. Where we talked about that capacity requirement. So Sherburne currently has about one thousand five hundred and sixty-two housing units. And the requirement is for you to zone for an extra seventy-eight in the form of multi-family housing. So that sort of, that's it. There's no, I'm not sure where the fifty-six hundred number came from. That would, you know, I'm sure you have some natural growth happening anyway, other forms of development and such. But in terms of the multi-family unit capacity, it's just seventy-eight units. The model, you know, when the zoning eventually comes in, that number may be a little higher than what that is potentially. But again, you have other limitations to development besides just what the model shows under ideal conditions. Okay, oh, sixty-five hundred is what he meant. So I'm wondering if, if John, I, maybe I'm still a little confused. Why don't we wait just a moment until we get into the Q and A? Because I do want to make sure that we are able to discuss. And, and at that time, I can probably ask, you know, John to unmute and, and identify himself, and we can try to get to the bottom of it. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to share one of their concerns? Or, and/or I can just talk, I also have a list of some of the common ones that we hear. And see if there's any others that we haven't heard.
In here. This point, based on the conversation that you would like to address.
Does it require both of you? Lanny, Ruben, Twenty-Sixth Elliot Street. Does it require both of these proposed districts to meet the seventy-eight unit requirement?
Seventy-eight is the total across any and all, all districts.
But does it need both of the proposed locations to meet seventy-eight?
It would not need both locations to meet seventy-eight. No, seventy-eight is possible on even just one of those spots, most likely.
Want to take a question from the remote audience? Hearing done?
Grace Shepard, Happy Road. Sherburne has restrictions on water and sewer usage. Sherburne has restrictions on water and sewer usage. Um, and it's based on science. Uh, that has gone to court and been supported over the years. Will this increase the pressure, the capacity to have zoning? But not, will people come in and say, the zoning says I can do this? Will this change the legal pressure on our rule? Not the ones that were in the past, perhaps just to stop everything. But the ones that we defend now, which are based on good science.
No, so you know, if a person, um developer wanted to come in and say, let's just pick on, you know. One of the Washington Street parcels, for example. Um, I said, okay, I want to put in, you know, six units or something. Um, they would have to meet all the other, they would have to meet all the rules in the bylaw, the setbacks and so forth. And then they would also have to show that they had adequate with meeting your water rules and your septic rules. Um, and so forth, um, that exists.
We have a question uh from a remote, um Marian Loiter.
Oh yeah, thanks. I wanted to ask um if Sherburne requires, according to the math in this law, seventy eight units. Uh, to be allowed within, in a multifamily uh uh goal. You could subtract twenty five percent in the mixed use area. If you could build a whole nineteen within the mixed use area of town center. Uh, but then you show that that mixed use area is entirely consumed by Zone Two well areas. So is the town still able to uh propose building nineteen units in a mixed zoo use zone? When uh it's uh is with, it's all within Zone Two?
Um, so I would say that, you know, this is where the sort of the zoning and the reality possibly diverge. Um, so also there's a distinction between the mixed use zone and the multifamily zone. So the mixed use zone actually might become a part of the overlay district. But actually are most likely not going to be actually relevant into the, what the town applies for for compliance. And could have, could have different rules than say the fifteen units an acre per se rule. Um, so I think that of all of the areas we discussed, that one's probably the most inflexed. Because the planning board has to kind of decide if it wants it to. Sort of the capacity potential there to count or not. And it may make sense to actually not consider those districts for the M E T A compliance at all. And only focus on um one or more of the other blue parcels from the map.
Right, you didn't quite answer my question.
Yeah.
Does the, uh, according to the, 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 the three A law, which I've read.
Yeah.
You can reduce your total number of required units. If you have a certain density fulfilled within a multi-use zone.
Yes.
A twenty five percent multi-use zone.
Yes.
That would reduce our target to fifty nine units in a multifamily zone in the three A districts. But even though the uh, the multi-use zone is not in the compliance model of the three A district by itself. If it's in, if it's in a Zone Two sensitive area. So that in fact, you could not build those nineteen units in that zone. Uh, can you still use it, it theoretically to comply with three A?
That's a really good question. So the first thing that the town has to do is decide if it wants. The state to consider those as mandatory mixed use districts in order to claim that capacity credit. Um, if it does, it needs to apply to the state, say, hey, we have a town center. We want to count the twenty five percent of the capacity. That credit that this model gives us for these areas in our town center to count toward that seventy eight unit number. You actually can't kind of get out of the seventy eight unit number, but you can get credit for a mo- mixed mandatory mixed use district. Um, and so that, I, I don't know. The state may come back and say, yes, it may say no. If they say yes, then you can get credit for, you know, however many units, the. Twenty five percent of however many units the model says you can build in that, in those green zones.
Yeah, so what you're saying is you don't know whether the state might look at that. Uh, that sensitive view, that sensitive area map and say, uh-oh, this is in a sensitive area. So we won't let them use that.
Correct.
Okay.
In theory, in theory, it should be fine because it's sensitive, not excluded. But I don't know, they may, they may flag it as an issue.
Laura, I just wanted to quickly, there, there are a number of people who have um placed questions in the chat. I don't know if Noah has seen all of them, but there were a couple that do overlap, so maybe they could be addressed.
Um, sure. Uh, you know, I think we are, it seems like people are eager to get in the Q and A portion of the program. So I'm just going to kind of skip ahead here, uh just touch on some of the common concerns we have heard and common. Common benefits that we've heard and then we'll just kind of do more of a Q and A. Um, so some of the commonly expressed concerns we hear are impacts on schools. Um, in Sherburne, those are likely to have a more limited impact because of the relatively smaller number of units that are being built. And the type of units that are being built and the fact that this would probably happen more incrementally over time. Um, same with sort of traffic that's would be evaluated on a site plan review basis by the planning board. Um, they could certainly ask for traffic impact studies and things like that. Um, developers are going to be responsible for covering their own water and sewer uh requirements and infrastructure. And those con- constraints still exist. And then site plan review with the planning board is an opportunity to discuss any kind of aesthetic um considerations there. Um, in terms of benefits that um we've heard, I mean, one is really compliance with the law, which is a benefit. Um, having some consistency with other related plans and being in support of other related plans. Um, if, you know, if done, if done right, it's an opportunity. And then trying to promote, you know, equity and affordability and and more housing choices in com- in your community. Um, I also just want to mention that there's some resource, other resources in addition to the planning board website. Um, the um housing and community development website has an overview of everything. And there's an excellent webinar series put together by the Mass Housing Partnership. So we'll be sure to be can link some of these um with the presentation later so you can explore them if you so wish. But I want to mostly spend our time answering all of your questions. Um, so why don't I turn to this, um.
Next question, this person, sorry, the next question comes to somebody in the audience. So if we can answer that question and then we'll go back to the remote, so we'll go back and forth.
Sure, yeah, I, if someone could kind of help be the moderator, I'm happy to answer questions.
Happy to do that.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, uh, given the complexity of Lanny Rubin, twenty six Elliot Street. I mean, given the complexity of developing downtown, you are saying that either of these locations. Are capable of fulfilling the requirement. Well, given the fact that the Kendall Street location has the infrastructure. I mean, you're saying the developer is responsible, but it's going to impact the town and the town's going to have to play well. Cause that lot itself is not going to supply probably both the septic and the water. Why not simply advocate the one location and make everybody's label lot simpler?
Yeah, that's fair enough. I mean, that's a sort of feedback, I think, is is welcomed, you know, by the, by me and the planning board as we move forward into the next um phase. And if there's a, you know, a general co- community uh feeling of whether it's the Kendall Ave one or more of a town center approach. That's also helpful feedback.
The next question comes from Frank Hess.
Right, it goes along the same lines, since we have those proj- projects.
Frank, anytime anybody uh asks a question, please give us your name and your address.
Okay, Frank, Frank Hess, uh sixty four South Main Street. Um, we have those projects that we are expecting to be developed on Cooley Street, which will require the water and sewer to go right by that Kendall Lot. So would we be required or would we want to use our excess capacity on those lines to supply that location with sewer and water?
Um, well, you, you certainly wouldn't be under any obligation to. I think that if a developer wanted to, you know, let's say under the hypothetical that the Kendall Ave location is the. Is the one and only parcel that the town puts forward for compliance and it meets the uh rules. Um, compliance rules and a developer does move forward to, to put some units there. Um, that would um, I think be an advantage to them to have nearby access to water and sewer to tap into. But in terms of actually building the connection and paying for that, that would be on the developer. I wouldn't um presume that, you know, the town, that would be the town's responsibility.
Thank you.
Okay, now for a question from somebody here in the live audience, does anybody have a question?
Tom Herbston, seventy nine Hollis Street, uh apart from Milton, can you tell us what other towns might have rejected? Uh, this new state law?
So Milton is the only one that I have heard of so far, although most of the communities, the only communities really that have been. Um, required to have something in place are the rapid transit communities. So we're really looking at the whole, the block of the next group, which is um mainly all the like commuter rail and bus. Kind of communities are are up next um at the end of twenty twenty four. Um, and I think there's a lot of discussions, there's a couple of rapid transit communities. I think that um maybe went back and forth a little bit or revised what they did. But everybody so far has found a way to comply with the exception of Milton. And I, I think that we'll see what happens there. But um, I would expect that they would try to find a way to comply in a way that was acceptable to the community as well. So they definitely rejected what they had on the table in the first place, but um hopefully they can find a compromise.
The next question comes from Meredith, Dobby.
Hi, yeah, thank you. You, you answered my initial question in part. I, I guess, is there, is there any discussion from the state about extending bus service? To then serve these communities once they're built? Because that seems like it would be the logical thing for a community like Sherburne, where they're really quite, quite far distances to any of these. You know, locations, bus stops or or otherwise.
Um, not to my knowledge. I think that they're really looking to try to focus um future uh development on areas with existing transit. More than extending the transit that is there. I know that's a bit of a stretch for Sherburne where you don't have anything.
The next question comes from, in the room. Please give us your name.
All right, my name is Katie Trapp Hagan, on aisle fourteen Kendall Avenue. I moved here two years ago specifically to live in a much smaller population. And so I am about as unhappy as you can get about this. My question is, how are you possibly going to have the multifamily units have sewer, have water? And in the upcoming years, we're all going to need a solar array, which by the way, you're not supposed to put over a leaching field. I already asked. So additionally, who is going to pay for this?
So the, the only thing the town is obligated to do is, is make this an allowed use in its zoning. It's not obligated to um create any additional water or sewer. Um, since you don't have any sewer, except perhaps maybe being able to tie into something off of Framingham. Um, then the development would be restricted to what they're able to make fit. With a, a, a septic system that meets all of your requirements and and water and so forth. So whether they need to do a well or tap into something that's public water and and meets the regulations. So I interpret that as, well, your, your zoning may comply with what they um require. The reality, especially in, say, the town center area, if that was the direction that the community wanted to go. The reality is that the density that would actually maybe be done there would realistically be much lower. Um, because you have to meet these other requirements too.
All right, um, thank you for your answer. And I'd like to know if I'm the only one who's to talk to a state rep about this.
Um, I'm sure you're not, I have, I'm not privy to um. What conversations have been happening with, at the state level.
But the next question comes from Matthew, uh, still here, just concerned.
Hi, everybody, uh, Andrew Sylvia, three Elliot Street. Uh, I, I just had a question about the map that was in the presentation. Is that the current map that the planning board is, is moving forward with?
That is just the latest, it, let me pull it up here so we can just look at it. Um, this is just the latest of where it got left. So I think this is just the starting point for moving forward into the next phase. Um, and we know that seventy eight, you know, seventy eight units could be accommodated. Um, on any one of those, well, I can't say that maybe, I haven't exactly looked at the lowest parcel quite yet. But for sure that northernmost blue one or the and or the Kendall Ave one um in and of themselves can meet the seventy eight requirements. It's um, uh, so i- at least in terms of course of zoning, not necessarily in terms of. Um, but whether, but I think the town also wanted to look at it in a more comprehensive way. And in light of other, you know, relevant plans, hence they're sort of looping in the town center area. Um, in terms of accommodating other kinds of mixed use and so forth. But really, there's the three multifamily parcels, but any, really any one of them, a combination of them could, could work.
I, I unders- I understand the goal. Uh, but a- at the prior meeting, it, it was informed to the group that that map was an outdated one. And then there would be a new map presented at today's meeting. And I was just wondering if the planning board might be able to answer if there is a more updated map.
Yes, Laura, this is Heidi, could I answer that question?
Of course, please.
Sure, I think if Frank, you can share the screen. We do have one that we, residents have asked to uh have their li- land included or the property is considered. So the planning board is willing to consider them and Frank, I think is going to bring up the map.
I'm looking.
Uh, what I sent in this afternoon to you, it says the proposed, I, I have it open in fact. Okay, well, can you share? So these are other ones that we're also looking at to add into. And that's one of the reasons we wanted to slow this down a little bit and take time to hear from residents. We do have some statements to read from other residents as well tonight. And the historical district as well has had a comment, so we want to make sure they're read in to the meeting. So these piece, these parcels in orange are residents that have written in and asked if they could be included in the overlay district. And that's, um, so Laura, so we're also entertaining those.
Okay, I, I just in follow up to that, I, I, I had believed that in the last one, the planning board had all. Actually voiced their opinions and all were in favor of adding those parcels to the map and that that would be included and updated tonight.
Well, nothing is set in stone. The whole thing, point of the hearing was to hear from residents and get some feedback. So the planning board did vote to support including this in a, in a future one. But we also have impact, we've now heard from the historical district and a few other residents. So we, this is what we'll be submitting to have a new model done. But we also would like to hear from other residents and we're going to take some time to work through this process a little more. Not just try to rush to get it done for April.
Thank you.
Uh, the next one that has their hand raised is Addie May, boys, and then we'll come back to the room.
You're muted, Addie May.
Sorry, in light of this discussion, I, I do wish to, um, this, this hearing is an opportunity to. Provide further education and also feedback and also find out what other questions and concerns people have. And and we realize that we are not ready for town meeting this April. And planning board did, um, we had an initial informal hearing, I'm not sorry, not a hearing. We had an informal meeting with her residents who were abutting the original blue and green areas that were shaded. Were invited to come forward with concerns they may have. And planning board members were um somewhat surprised of residents that were interested in actually joining their parcels. Then on further discussion. Um, somewhat surprised of residents that were interested in actually joining their parcels. Then on further discussion, some of that. Um, was because of the opportunities that the multifamily zoning bylaw might provide. We're preserving some of those houses as are, as they exist currently. So I know there have been concerns brought up by historical. And there's concerns do need to be further explored, and again, this is not the end of discussion on this. However, when we did discuss with the butters, uh, several of them who do have homes that are of historic nature that. We appreciate the design and the architecture and they do add a value to our town center. What we we realized was. The 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 fact that the um, the density of the fifteen units per acre, as we saw in a previous slide, that that could look like one. House with two condos and that fits, and the fact that. The multifamily has a cap that you um, it doesn't trigger a an affordable unit component until ten units. Um, would make it financially viable for one of the larger. Um, existing historic structures to be converted into condos and preserve the exterior. And um, preserve the 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 structure as is potentially. While meeting the requirement and also providing some potentially more naturally affordable housing, whereas under the current. In inclusionary zoning bylaw. Um, even a proposal that we'll discuss later of that we're bringing forth to town meeting to go reduce it from. Triggering at two to triggering at six to be in line with more with other uh surrounding communities. Um, six would, you know, would potentially make it less likely for those homes to be um viable as. Inclusion, under the inclusionary zoning to be viable as um converted into condos. So there are benefits. And there are reasons that would preserve what we have. Um, this zoning overlay. As we explored it, does not necessarily mean tear down and everything new. So there are pros and cons, and again, that's what we're here to discuss tonight.
Next question comes from the room again.
Suzie Wheelwright, one thirty-seven Hunting, Hunting, Suzie Wheelwright, one thirty-seven Hunting Lane. Um, I would like to um. Give Heidi Doyle. Uh, some comments that we have on the proposal and I want to make one point, and that is that in. In opposition to what Addie May just said, um, you you generally have to. Understand that you get what you zone for, and I would say, you know, that um, you you are. It makes neighbors concerned about whether. What their neighbors might want to do in order to cash out and go away, and that certainly will affect. How you live and how you feel about where you live um and anybody, anybody else as well.
Submitted a wall list of comments.
So is there nobody else on the remote that has a question? Have another question in the room?
Yeah, I'm certain amount of stress that. Uh, Gary Hawkins, nineteen Kendall Ave. I'm a little bit distressed. The only name I hear in actual put forward is Kendall Ave, and that's my stand stomping grounds and and my fam- my wife's family stomping grounds. Their house, the house that's been there for all those years, and now we're uh being thrown to the whims of uh other people. In this town, and I object. That's pre- pretty much what I have to say.
Could someone define the downtown parcel and give me a better orientation? I can't quite figure out. What the downtown intersection looks like there. Could they show Town Hall and other landmarks?
The downtown parcel is that business, our existing business general district.
What is, what is, what is the BG? What's RA? And so where's Hunting Lane?
Hunting Lane is the 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 road that's on the en- edge of the blue RA.
Oh, okay, all right.
That is hunting. Uh, the school is, if you go right kind of where the corner of the green and the blue.
I got you. Okay, thank you. That's the railroad track. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Um, Sean Hogan has a question.
Yes, hi, Sean Hogan, twenty-four North Main Street and seventy-four Washington. So I we, I feel like we went by the compliance slides a little quick. What is the actual cost of non-compliance with this? Do we, do we know that number?
Um, we, you, you don't. Um, good, because I think you would have to look at it a couple of different ways. One is. Looking into the full list of all of the grant programs that you would then no longer be eligible to. Have, and if there's any of those that you you could qua- quantitate, you know, if there's those that you've used in the past. Um, what that number is, but it's a little difficult to sort of project forward. Um, also, there would be presumably if you, if the state did, if you did not. Not comply, there would presumably be a legal cost that the town would. Uh, have for the state being super the state and needing to sort of move forward that process.
Okay, so here in the uh, in the room, uh, we have a couple of uh comments that came uh to us uh prior to this meeting. They were written, so I'm just going to read those, so bear with me as I try to read this and uh. And hold the mic and uh and read this out. This is from the his Sherborne Historical Commission. It was dated on February the fourteenth. It is our understanding that the planning board has the responsibility to propose a way to comply with the state mandated MBTA zoning. And it gives the uh, there's a legal uh. By creating a multifamily overlay district sufficient to add number of housing units required. Sherborne having been designated a small adjacent community, allow, although we receive no service from MBTA or any of the transportation activity. The planning board has proposed two overlay districts. The one on Kendall Ave is uh approximately both appro- uh to framing have water and sewer. Facilities that could provide for their required density. The proposed area on North Main Street, however, has neither of those advantages and includes several historical and. Architecturally important properties, with the Whitney Paul Tavern at forty-one North Main Street being one of the most important of those by reason of its uh front and set in a location as one of. Enters the town. It establishes the historical character of Sherborne and is a rare survivor in the region of an early tavern with its outbuildings. Our law charge as a commission is to advise town boards regarding historic preservation and its importance to the community, understanding fully. That any building in that designated MOD district. Will be demolished to maximize the number of housing units for sale on the property of the developer and the owner. We respectfully advise that forty-one North Main Street should be removed from the proposed MOD. We further suggest that and advise that the parts of town center district that include the historic Clark House at eighteen North Main. The Dawson Memorial Building at four North Main, now part of the Abbey Road Development also be excluded. All three parties are listed on the State Register of Historic Places. And all are Sherborne Center National Register Multiple Resource Area. The commission further consideration and advice is that. Achieving the state required number of housing units by designating only one district on Kendall Ave should be optimum. Maintaining the smaller village character of the center, which has often been cited as Sherburneized, as an important reason to choose. To live here while still filling our legal responsibility to provide more housing.
Um, Sean Hogan, did you have another question or is that just your hand still raised?
This, yeah, sorry, I did. I was just curious if this legislation was crafted prior to COVID or after COVID, a- and the reason is. Yeah, obviously, the world's different and there's more remote work than there has ever been at any point in history. You could say the same thing about retail shopping. And just e-commerce in general. So w- was this created post-COVID or or pre-COVID? Because it. I just struggle to understand the logic of it in a a post-COVID world. Thank you.
Yes, it was created post-COVID. Uh, so the law passed in twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
Email that was sent in by a resident. The resident is um Warren and Suzie Wheelwright. As you know, the historical commission is opposed to the planning board's overlay district in the town center with good reason, but there are many other valid reasons for opposing this proposal. Providing the need for good planning and practical approach. Our personal comments reflect the reasons we oppose the town center zones are as follows. The destruction of historic buildings and thus the historic character that greets drivers entering Sherborne from the east and north. Dense housing will overtax the already maximized groundwater supply in the area, as proven by fifty-nine North Main, forty B development causing. An existing aberters well to go dry. This owning proposal does not recognize that this entire town is dependent on. Its groundwater except in Kendall Avenue zone. I'm sorry, street zone. Uh, number three, dense housing will likely overtax the human waste uh processing ability of the area, placing an unrealistic burden on the. Board of Health to protect the existing residents in the area and the new buyers of this house, of this housing, and unfair transfer of impacts. Four, the zoning initiative does nothing to address the unknown high cost. To provide for municipal water and sewer systems when, if groundwater and septic systems fail under the heavy new load. The risks are sizable and the costs are even larger when you consider the construction piping around town and the ongoing processing and management. Five, the town center traffic is already heavily congested where this dense zoning is proposed and such increased density of housing will only aggravate uh congestion. Six, the firehouse uh department, uh, the fire department's response to time around town will be adversely affected when the traffic congestion increases. Also, if the dense development involves multi-story, the town will be faced with the cost of new equipment to use, higher floors, et cetera.
Except for you guys.
The sum of these two. One, propose only one zoning district from Kendall Street, and two, Sherborne should file a home petition uh to the state. For all the above stated reasons, select boards suggest uh a while back, the uh select board should take the lead. To do so, and the planning board should support this action by articulating the valid and relatively neat reasons for taking this recourse. The town's nearly entire dependence on groundwater and any ground septic system, which the town serves directly to the MBTR now.
Um, if I may, I'd like to just address a couple of concerns or not concern, maybe confusion that there seems to be. To begin with, this is um a zoning bylaw, but ten, put. Proposed zoning bylaw change. I understand uh the previous comment that you get what you zone for. Definitely in in cases that there is a reason that's why we have zoning. That being said, we have an area of our town center. That is business general, and for years and years, residents have said it'd be nice to have a small market. It'd be nice to have. More of a coffee shop. It would be nice to have, there's another restaurant. There's things that people would love to have, but the existing infrastructure, even though it is zoned as business. The existing infrastructure will only enable what is there now. So changing the zoning does not necessarily mean things will be. Um, we're going to have apartments, uh, high rises in town. That's not possible. We all know that. What it could potentially mean is enabling. A a single-family house to become a multifamily house, a two, it's become a duplex and it and making it. Um, again, a more naturally affordable option for someone potentially, and so there are benefits to looking at our town center. We, we do. Um, you, I occasionally do see kids riding bikes to the playground and uh going to um. C and L Frosty for ice cream in the summer, and it's nice that we have sidewalks for people to walk on, and it's nice that we have a community that is walkable, and there are benefits to having a town center with. Um, some additional housing options. Again, having the zoning does not mean that it is constructed. It is personal property. These are private properties. Um, ho- home, the the owners of those existing properties have a choice of. Now an additional option. The biggest option is potentially ch- converting a house from a single to a duplex if the infr- infrastructure will allow. Now, there are limits. We all know that there are current. Limits with our kind of somewhat fragile town center infrastructure as it exists with water and sewer, hence the reason we do not have. More restaurants and businesses in our existing business general zoned area.
You have a question here in the room?
Is there anything, oops, is there anything in the law as written that requires the town to choose land? That is actually usable for that purpose? In other words, if you choose land, which is already so compromised in terms of water and sewer. That it is not possible for increased densities, would the state say, look at it and say? Um, you're playing a game with us. This is not usable.
I I'm happy to uh at least give my first shot at that uh answer, if if I may, and then uh maybe others can as well. I would start by saying that one of the re- the requests is that it be placed in a area of our town that is as close. As possible, one, one, under two miles away from that MBTA station, because there has to be able to have that. The people living there to get to that transportation so they can go to Boston, Augusta, wherever they need to go. That was one of the areas that they're looking at. The second one they look at is the the town centers, because that's where everything is happening. That's where they can go and get whatever it is that they need. That's where the life of the town is. So those are the two. Primary areas that they look at first. So having it on the south side of town when the, you know, the trend of the commuter rail is that. Close to the north side of town just does not make, you know, sense for. Town, town, the center of town, because that's where the, where things are happening in the town, and the second area. Just tell you what the laws is, whether ha- what happens in Sherborne is different than what happens to laws. The laws, the law is asking for priority within areas close to the uh. A commuter rail station as possible, and the second is in a, in and around the town center.
And nothing else.
No, she said that.
That's the priority. Those are the priorities, not that there's nothing else.
She said that the excluded land is land that's undevelopable. So what's the definition of undeveloped?
Well, but if it's.
Right.
Laura has a slide on the, if it's flooded and sensitive lands, that might be helpful for this.
Does she want?
Made more developable.
Was Laura on?
Forty-one North.
But I think that's to get around.
Laura, Miss Laura's.
Laura, you gonna answer this question also?
You're actually not.
Sure, so the only other thing. The only other thing that impacts whether or not something meets compliance essentially is the impacts of excluded land. So you can count. Like what, this actually doesn't apply to Sherburne because you don't have a minimum land requirement, but in communities with a minimum land requirement of, say, fifty acres. But in communities with a minimum land requirement of, say, fifty acres, any excluded land can count toward your fifty acres, actually. However, you, it drops out when you're looking at what density is possible. So the denominator of land that's available, actually available to be developed on with, with the number of units that is feasible to do on that land, that's the number that gets you like modeled fifteen units an acre or not. That's really the only impacts of excluded land. So I think that if, if Sherburne moved forward and, and had a zone, say, like around the town center where there's some fairly large sections of excluded land, it would just, it would drop out of the model in terms of those areas wouldn't be counted as developable. But since your overall capacity is still relatively low per the amount of area that you're considering right now, you could meet those seventy-eight units in a number of different ways. So I think that it, it still works. Any kind of different configurations of this plan could still be feasible for the state's compliance.
Gino, would you give us your input on this?
Sure. I, I mean, I would back up what Laura just said. There, there's, Sherburne has multiple options that would work to meet the requirement. And excluded, the excluded land was shown on that map and it, the, it wasn't all excluded, even in the mixed-use zone. The, the mixed-use zone is not at all essential to meet the requirements. It could, it could drop out easily and, or it could be, it could be done another way, not part of three A. It could be just a, an overlay, mixed-use overlay district. It's not part of three A. So there's a lot of options available here. Just to comment on one thing, though, I think that the idea of trying to, well, I'll just say, it's a law, this is a law that the town has to comply with. It's not an incentive program for grants. It's that if you just don't do it, you don't get the grants. There's, there's going to be action. And we'll, we'll find out kind of what kind of action that might be with Milton. Luckily, they're serving as the, as the Guinea pig kind of instead of Sherburne. The idea of a, a home rule petition, that's not going to work. That would have to pass the legislature. And why would all the other legislatures that aren't, don't represent Sherburne? Why would they create a, an exception for Sherburne? Maybe if there is enough, you know, enough attention, they might change the law somehow. But I think it's unlikely because the housing crisis is a statewide issue and it's, it's hurting the economy. And I don't think, my personal opinion, I don't think the state's going to take a step back from pursuing housing options as it is. So for, for what, what it's worth, that's, that's my take. If, if that, hopefully that helps.
Gary Hawkins. Is there, is there any plan to take land? I mean, what, what makes the people, if I have a piece of land and I want to sell it, do I have to bow to the, to this plan and sell my land as toll? Or what other features of, of this is, is that clear? I mean?
How would you sell your land right now? You're not going to lose the same right that you have to sell it today.
Well, so if I, I'll just, I'll start, I'll start with an answer for that. And that is that this is an overlay bylaw, so our permitted use. So you don't have to change your house to a multi-zoning, but if you wanted to, you could.
If I want, if I want to sell the land, what do I do?
Let me finish. I'm answering your question. So if you don't, in this, if you don't want to change anything, you don't have to change anything to your property. The second thing, if you go to sell it, you still have, you, you sell it the way you would normally sell it. Whoever bought it from you not only has the ability to keep it the way that it is, but they'll also have the ability to change it to, from a single to a multiple family house because they want to. That's after you have left it. So they don't have to make it a multi-family house and you sell it.
Okay.
But if they want to, that just gives them that additional option. Should it be a family that had, say, three generations and they want to make it a three-family house? And have three generations live in there?
I just want to, my house.
So it, it would actually make your house more interesting because not only it couldn't be a single family, but it could also be a multi-family house. Whereas in the current, it's would only be a single family.
Well, I own Columbia Farm also. There's a big piece of land there. So am I afraid to do what I can do?
This again is an overlay. Whatever you want to do was based on whatever the town bylaws and the permits that you have are. That's what, what you would follow.
What about Sunshine Farm?
It stays the same.
No, so you're in Columbia and sometimes you're on the wrong side of the street.
Well, that's, but that's my wife's.
Okay, so yeah, so that's the only property right now that is potentially.
Well, things change.
That's right. And so you can see some residents have asked us to consider things.
Jane Young is the next person with their hand.
Hey, hey, thank you. This is Jane from sixty-two Green A. So it sounds like if the town decided to complain with the law, then the only question is, we have to choose where to, you know, to, to resume the district. And my question is, the infrastructure in Sherburne is not compatible with high-density housing. So certain improvement has to be done before you can create high-density housing. Then who is responsible for that, the town or the state?
Neither, really. It's the developer. So in, in the instance of the town center, you would need to be able to construct a septic system that met all of the town's rules and regulations, which probably impacts, you know, definitely impacts the amount of space and overall density that you could do. And the Kendall Ave scenario, if the developer were interested in tapping into an available and adjacent infrastructure from Framingham, that's really on their dime. So there's no financial impacts to the town in terms of, you know, building any new infrastructure.
I see. I, I, I understand the septic and the water part. Like, for example, the, on the slides you showed earlier, the district located in the north part is right on the fountain lane. That's like very narrow road. So I'd, if you really going to put like a multi-family over there, the road has to be probably improved, right? Maybe like a two lane at least. So who's going to do that?
It, it really is kind of, it is what it is. I think, yeah, that, and you know, I'm sure there could be, you know, traffic studies and things done. But your ability to leverage a major infrastructure improvement like that under a as-of-right scenario is pretty minimal. So I don't, and there's all kinds of other right-of-way, you know, legal issues and things which actually try to expand a road that I don't see that happening. So you're really more looking at what the impacts to, to traffic and things would be under the existing road conditions.
Okay, yeah, because I'm just wondering, because it sounds like we have to, truth, like there's an area to be the multi-family district. I'm just wondering whether the town can take advantage, you know, as to that finer plays, then make the, the out of the has to do something, then we can take advantage. That's what I'm trying to say.
Next question we have is from Judith.
Thank you for taking my question. Judith Schindler Rothschild, sixty-three Lake Street. There are a number of proposed developments currently being reviewed by the town, including the farm road development. And I believe some of these proposed developments have multifamily housing associated with them. How do those proposed developments fit into this plan? Thank you.
I don't.
So I'm going to defer to someone from the planning board or the town planner to discuss outgoing developments.
I think, yeah, so Laura, I will, I will have you clarify, but it's unfortunate. The forty B process and the, and the twenty-five percent affordable is a separate, i- is completely separate. And therefore, even though we have a number of developments being proposed and being reviewed and potentially built, none of those will count towards the MBTA compliance. Forty B does not count towards compliance. Even unfortunately, our area that's zoned EA at the moment, I believe, does not count towards compliance, even though we allow it a greater density. And it is expected to be multifamily. It is not, it, it, it just doesn't count the way the bylaw, the state's bylaw is written. But Gina or Laura, would you, either of you care to expand upon that? Because I'm sure I've missed something.
Well, I think, you're correct. The reason I, my understanding is why the existing EA district doesn't comply. It's, it's probably more than one reason, but one of the main reasons is that it require, it's just for age-restricted multifamily development, I believe. So that would have, if the town wanted that area to then comply with MBTA communities, you would have to change that bylaw to allow for any type of development that wasn't age-restricted. In terms of your ongoing forty B developments, you could, in theory, you know, use one of those zones to comply with, with three A. It's just, to the point I heard earlier, there is a preference, sort of good, quote-unquote, good planning practice and a preference toward wanting to locate these districts in areas that are as close to the commuter rail as possible and/or where it's consistent with other town planning efforts, like the town center area. So we were following, you know, we're following the lead of the planning board and, and the community in terms of where you all would like to, to see these districts. But to Gino's point, there's, there's a number of options that could potentially work.
Am I also correct in, this would need to, the, the zoning would need to be applied prior to a development. So our town is, as a town, we couldn't, if a forty B proposal is successful and a developer builds several multifamily units in an area of town that was not zoned, we cannot go back after, after the fact and say, oh, okay, now this is, this area has multifamily housing. And so now therefore we will include it in our multifamily housing zone to get it to count, right?
Well, I mean, there's, there's what's allowed under the law and there's sort of the town's prerogative, right? You can, there are communities who are using existing multifamily areas to count toward their multifamily zoning districts. So the law is really agnostic toward whatever is on the ground now. It, it, it really doesn't care other, in the compliance model. It only cares about potential capacity and excluded land and meeting the right numbers. So it's really on the town to make sure that this is going to work, you know, for you in a way that supports your larger vision for the community and makes sense, you know, for the, you know, the intention of the law and, and makes sense for what supports other aspects of your housing production plan and so forth.
The key being what makes sense with the intent of the law. And because the, the, when we do finally go forward to town meeting with the three A multifamily zoning bylaw, after whatever is passed, approved by town meeting, we'd go to the Attorney General's office for a final review and to say, well, let's throw the parcel that's the fields of Sherburne at the edge of Hollisden in that would most likely be rejected as it's on the opposite side and probably furthest from public transportation.
Right. So the example that I was thinking of when I was saying that is, for example, Mansfield around there, their train station already has a number of different multifamily units. They're looking to expand their existing transit-oriented development, overly district to a new area that happens to include a mix of multifamily and non-multifamily areas. And it's sort of, it makes sense both for the intent of the law, but also and for supporting their master plan and housing plan and other things. But it just happens that it already has the multifamily already built in that area. So it, it, you know, the law is agnostic, but I do think you're right that under scrutiny, they would look at and being like, well, look at, they just picked out their, you know, their forty B district. So I don't know. Honestly, this has all not been tried before. So I don't know what their response would be, but it could very well be that they were like, um, yeah, I don't know about that. But it hasn't been tested quite yet.
Um, Gino and then Marion, please.
Yes, in response to that question, just want to point out that it's one thing if there's an existing forty B that you zoned under, when it's not already built and then you change the zoning. Now the, now the developer has the option to develop the fifteen units per acre, ten percent affordable instead of twenty-five, and none of it would count, only the ten percent would count towards the S H I. So just need to be careful of that as well.
Uh, yeah, and I was just going to add that a forty B that's already built has deed, twenty-five percent deed restricted units by law. That couldn't possibly be included under the rules of the three A law.
Yeah, the only exception that they allow is for, if you have an existing, what's called forty R district, the sort of smart growth overly district that has a twenty units, or rather twenty percent affordable component. You are allowed then to use that existing forty R district at a level of twenty percent affordable. But as far as I know, the forty B issue is a totally separate kind of program from that.
I don't see any other questions. One more question and then we'll bring it to an end.
Yeah. Lanny Rubin, twenty-six Elliot Street. Is, is there any sense that the, our planning board and our selectmen should be making efforts to contact our state rep, state senator and, you know, try to look for ways to get an exception for Sherburne, or should we just forget, you know, just forget it? Go forward by the law as it exists. When I first, Paul DuRensis, when this first came out, before now, several months ago, said, oh, there's no chance this was going to be implemented because of Sherburne's various issues and infrastructure issues. Now it's changed from experience, but nonetheless, is it worth pursuing the political cause or is that just nonsense?
I'll, I'll, I'll give a first stab at this, that in the, the public comment period on this law, there was a lot of small towns that are in the situation that are a part of this, as you saw on the map in the very beginning. And so there was the question and the discussion with them during those public comments. And the law has been modified to allow this different level of density that you've seen listed in the presentation. So that has already happened and this is the, the result of that.
Thank you, Frank. That is correct. We, we, we have concerns voiced on, you know, there is a redlined version of the bylaw from the state, on the state's website of the multifamily housing zoning bylaw. And you will see that there were changes that were addressed in Sherburne. As you noticed, if you noticed from the previous slide, I believe Sherburne has to allow for seventy-eight units. And our neighbor in town Holliston also, they have, they do have some town water, but they are also almost predominantly all on septic and a large portion is on well water has to produce, I can't remember exactly, but four hundred or seven hundred?
Seven hundred and fifty.
So I mean, it, there's, I think this is, you know, I think we are, we're in a good place and that we have a little bit more time to thoughtfully look at where we're at and learn some more. But our representatives, we're, we're not, everyone has to comply. So it's, not complying is not an option. Gina, do you have something to add to that, please?
Just to point out that the, under the initial guidelines that were issued, Sherwin's obligation was seven hundred and fifty units, which is half, half the existing number of housing units. And it was reduced to seventy-eight, so.
Right. So the initial outrage, when we were discussing at previous past town meetings, this idea, this concept of initiating home rule petition was under that obligation of seven hundred and fifty units, as Gina has pointed out, was, you know, more than half of our existing residences. So we are now down to being required to provide the option for seventy-eight units. It's a huge drastic difference. There were changes made. Again, this is all zoning. This is not, if we don't have the infrastructure, this is what the, the existing, this is different than forty B. This does not override local zoning bylaws.
I have a question. Is the, it's, Suzie Wheelwright, one thirty-seven Hunting Lane. Is the Sherwin Planning Board in touch with other similar towns like Carlisle, for example? Is in a very similar place to where we are? Are you keeping up with him to see what kinds of, of zones they are trying to implement in order to comply with the law? And understand, I do know and understand that we have to comply with the law. The question is how best to do it?
Yeah. Um, I mean, as a, as a planning board, I do know we frequently do reach out to communities that are like ours, the town of Stowe, the town of Harvard, you know, Dover. We certainly frequently reaching out to inquire and we, our town planner, past town planner Gina Cartucci and current town planner Heidi Doyle are also in frequent communication with communities through the, the MAPC and town planner forums. And there's a lot of communication going on, trying to understand, you know, we're not operating in a silo and we're, we're trying to understand how other communities are approaching this. That doesn't mean we have the answers to everything, but we're certainly not trying to do this alone.
Well, the consultants, I would say that help us with that are also helping other towns. So they're taking the combined knowledge of this law and working with various communities to, to help and advise as well Sherwin, as well as other communities. That's a great question. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And we have, we are doing Topsfield's comprehensive master plan right now. We weren't their technical consultant for MBT communities, but I'm familiar with what their plan is, and they are a small adjacent town. We're, are working more directly with Sharon and Holliston. Both of those are, are a little bit different than Sherwin. They're not small adjacent towns, but they are similar in that they have the same kind of infrastructure constraints where dependence on groundwater and septic. So there's, 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 there's ways to do it. It's just about figuring out the, you know, what makes sense for Sherwin moving forward.
Um, I think we're, I think, Jim, if you have another question, but given that the hour is nine P M. And we do have two other warrant articles to discuss, although we do believe that they will be fairly short topics. But Jim, if you would like to respond or have a question?
Yeah, sure. It seems like we're lucky that we don't have as many units to provide as other towns, number one. But it also seems like the spirit of the law is to just rezone areas. As zoning seems to be the biggest obstacle to providing housing and complying with that would seemingly be pretty easy. If we look at Kendall Avenue, it seems like that area to be rezoned could provide the required density to comply with the law and has resources potentially from neighboring towns and doesn't have the potential to demolish historic properties. Whereas the center seems to be another goal, which is, you know, a very good goal in providing housing and amenities. But, you know, my, my, my question would be, shouldn't the focus of this conversation be on complying with the MBTA Communities Act, which ostensibly Kendall Ave Avenue would, would meet?
So, yeah, I mean, that is an option. Then I think that's a comment we've heard also from others tonight. So we could add that in. And moving forward, you know, that, that's one of those options that the town can consider is whether to just try to put all its eggs in one basket, if you will, and, and have Kendall Ave be the compliance district and then it have some other type of mixed use overlay district with other, you know, requirements that are tied into compliance in the town center area. That is an option or some other, you know, iteration. So I think that is probably one of those things that the town will be considering moving forward.
Well, I'd just thank everybody that came to town hall tonight. It is twenty-seven degrees outside. So that was quite big of the effort to be able to come out. So thank you for that. But we're going to finish at least this part of the hearing for, and I'll have to take on that. At least wanted to thank those that came here just to hear about the three A community and to thank Laura for her presentation.
So I, um, a hearing under the multifamily, I see our planning board members. All right. I believe we are, we're just waiting a minute for the, those in the town hall meeting room to, here so that, thinking about the attention of. Two other agenda items that were also posted with the hearing. Amendments to the inclusionary zoning bylaw.
Frank could mute that computer.
Technology.
I hope it gets serious. As long as you all read to them.
Almost one more conversation I may, we're getting close. Okay, go ahead. Sorry. All right. I believe we have resumed. Planning board members. Heidi, just a point of order on process. There was discussion that because we are not, we, we had, we posted the hearing in preparation for town meeting. And so it's regarding the posting of the hearing, opening the hearing for the three A multifamily MBTA communities, multifamily zoning bylaw. We, I, I, it's, you know, I think continuing the hearing is, doesn't make sense. We need to close that hearing. Do we need to close the three hearings at the end of all three hearings? Or can we close the three A multifamily hearing now?
I would continue with the last two and then close all three tonight because postponing two, and then one of them is going to be a short change that we know we don't need to have any further hearings on. So then I would just make one motion at the end after we finish the discussions.
Okay, so I, in accordance with the, the, the three hearings, the three warrant articles which were posted for a hearing tonight, the second one I'd like to address, because I believe it's the shortest for discussion, is the proposed warrant article to delete, to amend a section of the ground mounted solar voltaic bylaw, which was passed at town meeting last year. However, it has still not been approved by the attorney general's office. And there are comments and discussion that we are awaiting, we expect to hear in April from the attorney general's office, which we will need to address. And we, as a board, have not had an opportunity to discuss and review potential, to truly vet out and review potential language changes that the attorney general would like to see to bring forth to town meeting. So therefore, we are not prepared to bring forth changes to this current April, the, the upcoming April town meeting. So we are, we had, as a board at the past meeting, we voted to withdraw the warrant article. And because this hearing had already been posted for tonight, we need to formally withdraw the warrant article as a board. I would like to make a motion to withdraw the, the amendment to the solar, the warrant article requesting amendment to the solar voltaic bylaw.
Addie May, could we help? There, there are two people here in the audience for this article. Would you like at least to have some public comments from them before we make the vote? If they have anything they want to say?
Sure. Since we do have this as a posted hearing and they are present, yes, it's, sorry, I appreciate, yeah, I'm, I should have.
And then the speaker in here will pick, will hear you just fine. And if they, if they don't hear you, they will say something.
Ken, you have anything? So, uh, yeah, Mr. Ken Gregg with ninety Maple High, Evan Turner, I'll sit with ninety Maple. Given what you just said, that's what I was here to see. So I don't think we have any need to drag this out any further. If you guys are going to withdraw that and consider it at a future time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there any other discussion regarding before we make a motion to withdraw formally in accordance with the hearing and? No, okay. I have a motion to, a motion to, let's see, we, we, we voted again to withdraw, even though we, we, because we didn't do it at the hearing. So I believe we need to make a, once again, make a motion on behalf of the, the planning board. Okay. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote to withdraw the warrant article from this town meeting. Addie May Weiss is I. Frank Hope? Robert Wolf?
Hi.
And Will Dunham. I think you said I. All right. So the motion passes. We will be withdrawing on the warrant article from this town meeting. Pending, and we will look forward to having further discussion upon response from the attorney general's office sometime in April. It'll be a fun topic for the summer. And I guess moving on to the next posted hearing item, which was the inclusionary zoning bylaw. There were a few amendments. We, we, as a board, had discussed several amendments and approved several amendments that we, and language that was already turned into the select board office for printing publication. However, in light of, I think there was one line of text that referred to compliance with the multifamily overlay district zoning bylaw. And as we are not bringing forth that at this town meeting, we need to remove that line of text from the, from the warrant article. I don't have that text for some reason handy. I don't know if, if anyone else does or if we can.
It's. It's the housing draft.
I have not. I'm looking on it. It takes a second to, to organ. I wasn't prepared to do this today. I wasn't planning ahead to do this. Okay, that's okay. So please confirm if that's what you want me to share, right?
Okay, you're correct. Um, I'm trying to scroll down and I can't.
You can't, we have to.
All right, there, yes. So let's see.
So it is, the section no longer applies. Basically, the whole section three that had been added as a potential for going forward to this town meeting will now be removed from the language being proposed at town meeting because it, it's a moot issue if we don't have a three A's. We don't, we don't have this multifamily overlay district in place. So.
I just asked that, I, I understand that we don't have it now. But when we do have it, will we want to add this back in? So do we totally delete it or should we say that as a multifamily overlay district law, once a overlay district law was accepted?
No, no. Bylaws you want strictly.
So then we change it again next year after?
If it gets approved, right. But I mean, ask Will, he's an attorney on this, but I would not.
Just asking a question.
Yeah, no, I just wouldn't put conjecture on it.
Any other further comments? I believe, you know, we'll get really good at coming back to town meeting with housekeeping issues. All right. So can I have a motion to remove this, the non applicable language of the multifamily overlay district from the proposed amendments for the warrant article language we are submitting for this town meeting?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? All right, others in favor? Addie May Weiss is I. Will Dunham? Frank Hope? And Robert Wolf?
Hi.
Motion passes. So we now have our amended language with that removed that can be submitted to the select board. There was a February twenty-second, I believe, deadline for all language in full to be submitted to the town of Sherborne Select Board. Even though the, the town meeting is in April, part of the process in the town of Sherborne is the select board request all language in full by the end of, you know, it's February twenty-second. And just going forward as a town board, we will be aware of the work that we do that language will be completed in full by the end of February. So I don't know if there's any other, let's see, I think I can now make a motion to close the hearing portion. Is that correct, Heidi?
Yes.
So motion to close the hearing, the formally posted hearing on the three proposed warrant articles. It's closed. The second, anybody? Okay, Rob Wolf, second, moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the three warrant articles? Hearing none. Motion to close the hearing. Addie May Weiss is I. Will Dunham?
I.
Rob Wolf?
Hi.
And Frank Hope?
I.
Thank you. The hearing is formally closed. Uh, moving on to town, the regular business of the planning board and the agenda. Is there any other town reports, sort of town planner report of any other issues to discuss? town reports, is there a town planner report of any other issues to discuss?
Town planner report, yes. Um, we have the CPTC meeting coming up March sixteenth at Holy Cross. Um, I think I forwarded out the annual conference agenda to anyone if they want to see. People are interested in going, let me know. It's ninety-five dollars a person. I would have to get um, send in registration for that.
Sorry, what date was that?
March sixteenth. It's a Saturday. It's also the same day as the advisory public hearing.
It's the sixteenth. That's all right. That's uh, requested.
Right. So just send me an email saying you'd like to go. And if anyone else is interested in that, we'll put in a registration this next week. Get that covered. Um, but you could take a look at what the topics are that are on, uh, going to be offered. That was it on the next meeting dates for me.
Any other business for tonight?
Just wondering if that um, letter was sent, if the letter was sent to the uh, the select board with regard to the reorganization.
Yes.
Yes, the, the planning board did send a letter to the select board indicating that there was an open position. Um, requesting the select board to fill the open position. Um, and that then there would be two spots on the town ballot. Um, for nominations at town caucus, which is March seventh. One turn, one being a three-year term and one being a two-year term. Um, the select board have it on their agenda for discussion, I believe, this Thursday night. There seems to still be some discussion that and it seems unclear whether they are required to wait thirty days before they may appoint someone that it must be posted and advertised for thirty days before an appointment may be made. Um, seems to be the direction that they are interpreting the bylaw for the process. Um, any interested candidates should fill out the standard application that the town provides for any position wishes to be in appointed position. It's a generic uh, application. Um, you can get it from Diane Moore in the select board office, or also town planner Heidi Doyle also has a copy of that. Um, application and those applications should be sent to both Heidi Doyle and Diane Moore, I see. For the select board review.
Addie Mae, I think they're going to ask about all applications I've sent to H R.
So I guess that's where Diane Moore also serves as the H R capacity for the town of Sherburne. And that's, that's why, so she's in the select office, but she is also the town H R person. So that is why applications are going into her.
She would forward it to the.
Right. So select board is meeting this Thursday to discuss the project. They want to be able to post the positions. So they'll announce that it's open. And I think they're going to have a two-week period to do it to um, review. And then they'll ask probably, I have a joint meeting with planning board to review the applicants in two weeks from Thursday. I believe that was the latest I.
So, but of course it is, it has been discussed that by the time they are in a position to appoint, there'll be about two weeks before, or even might even be a week before there's a townwide election. So it's kind of a it's an interesting process.
Well, if it's in two weeks, two weeks, uh, time brings us into March and the elections aren't until May, so there's a little bit more time.
We'll see what they say Thursday.
All right. Any further business to discuss? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Next meeting dates.
Uh, next date. Um, yes, I believe we've, we've gone through this string of meeting every Tuesday, so I forgot that we didn't meet every Tuesday. Um, historically, we meet the first and third Tuesdays of the month. Right now, we actually are on the third Tuesday of the month. So the first Tuesday of the month would be March fifth, which happens to be um, an election day. However, since we have the capability of not utilizing town hall and being fully remote is a Zoom, I believe that um, previous prohibition against having a town board meeting on an election day is been um, reduced. Is there, is, is, does, does March Tuesday, March fifth work for board members?
Well, can I just maybe argue the opposite position and um, in that if, if we're opening this to Zoom and the idea is that people can attend the meeting, then having the conflict with an election, some people coming home and then also then having to vote, you know, could possibly. Um, so I don't know if we have something that's that urgent that we need to do something on March the fifth versus picking another day or just skipping that particular March the fifth date. But I'm, I'm open. I'm just throwing that out there as just a devil's advocate, so to speak. Not to be argumentative, but just to be the devil's advocate.
Is there an executive session planned again? That's the only thing I was thinking is if.
I don't know.
Executive session planned?
Is there an executive session planned for uh, the fifth, March fifth?
Or any date soon? I don't know with.
Um, I am I, I don't believe we have another one's plan. However, I was not able to, I had to jump from the previous executive session. Uh, Will, if you can fill me in if we, if a second session was planned?
I don't think we've scheduled a second session, but I think where we came out was that we were going to ask Heather to seek an extension of our filing deadline so that we could all get together again, planning board and select board and, and discuss one more time before we actually file anything. So the fifth may be a good time to do that.
Okay. And as far as, I mean, I, I was always my understanding, the reason we did not hold meetings was because um, it dated to when, definitely prior to any opportunity for a Zoom or even a conference call type meeting and meetings were all in person and they were all in the facility, the same facility that was set up with voting tables and voting booths. And so the move, the rooms were just not available. So um, I believe we are okay to meet on the fifth, um, as long as we do it through Zoom a hundred percent remote. So is everyone okay with the sticking to the first and third Tuesdays of the month at this point? So the expectation that we have March fifth as a meeting and I have the calendar. It'd be most likely March fifth and then March nineteenth.
Fine with that.
Okay. All right. Otherwise, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote to adjourn and close the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your participation and especially Frank and Heidi for managing things from town hall and making the hybrid scenario happen. Um.
And Steph for getting the, the screen sharing going. She was instrumental for the documents.
Yes, as, as always, Steph, um, being able to, you have everything right at your fingertips at a moment's notice is incredibly helpful. Um, I need to get better organized myself. All right. So thank you, everyone. And I hope uh, we, uh, roll call vote to, to adjourn a meeting. Addie Mae Weiss is I, Frank Hope.
Hi.
Uh, Rob Wolf.
Hi.
And Will Dunham.
Hi.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. I really appreciate everyone's time tonight. Thanks.
Hi, everybody.